They will give me clear transparency of what's going on with that water bill. So should I ask for an outside audit of the water bill?
We're having an outside audit.
Oh, good. Thank you. And then I had a legal question for attorney flowers and I'm wondering, do I have to write a letter to you to request if the leisure world representatives should not recuse themselves voting to increase our costs for trash and not theirs? And so, again, I'm bringing up another problem that I see. It is the pensions from the grand jury, which is 23.1 million. Is that a true figure? Do I have to have a letter requesting an audit of the pensions? I asked for donation over and over and over and never got an answer that he could come down here and audit the pension problem. So is this a true figure from the grand jury? Two, 23.1 million. So how do we continue on this track? Where do we go from here? Because I was told, I'm not sure if this is true, that you took the in-lug parking fees and paid for the lights on Main Street. Now, the in-lug parking fees, no, didn't do that. Okay. Then who changed the 1K, 5K, 10K run from April to October? Who requested that to be changed? Is that changed or is that not true? I mean, the 1K, 5K, 10K has been here a long time. They give a lot of money back to the city and to organizations. Now, the car show, I heard you interfered with the car show. Do they give money back to the city? Or do we just keep it in the chamber? So I don't know if I should write a letter about the legal question of refusing yourself to vote for something that you're not voting on, that you use trash. So let's see, what else is there? Well, there is a motion coming up and I do have all of my letters ready and all of the documents for people to see, which will be going around town. So I guess that's it for tonight. Thank you.
Mayor, take a moment. The video streaming is out now.
Oh, okay. Thank you. For anyone who is at home and wants to, would prefer to watch by video, the video streaming is now up. The complete program will be put up later this week.
Now that you have the video fixed, I guess I'll speak. We're waiting pretty good place. Robert Goldberg, Seal Beach. I'd like to speak to two items on the agenda tonight. The first one is item A, which is a proposal to change the council's rules of procedures regarding the placement of items on a future agenda, specifically changing the rules regarding the placement of items that deal with performance of city staff. And I think that really probably most likely means the city manager. The proposal is, I mean, currently, one member of the council can ask to have a performance review placed on your closed session, an upcoming closed session agenda. This proposal would say that you would need three members of the council to concur that the city manager's review would be on a future closed session agenda. The concern I have with this is that the same policy, your rules of procedure prohibit each of you from discussing performance of city staff in a public arena. And I don't disagree with that. I think that's appropriate to have in closed session. But if you have to have three of you concur to have a discussion, and the Brown Act prohibits one of you from talking to two of your colleagues outside of this venue, it seems that it's a catch-22. Because an individual, one of you, if one of you has a concern, you can't make your arguments here in public because of your policy. The Brown Act says you can't lobby, can't have discussions with two members outside. So it seems like it's a catch-22. So I don't think this is going to work. Being able to discuss the city manager's performance, whether it's good or bad, I think is important. If one person or two people have concerns, you air it out in closed session and that's where it stays and you work it out. But this, to me, stymies the process. Doesn't help. The second issue I'd like to speak to is item K, which is the call for ballot measures, specifically on the utility users' tax. The proposal in the staff report is to reduce the utility tax from 11% to 10%, but to modernize the language that deals with the telephone and information taxes. Granted, the language is very old. It predates the Internet, it predates smartphones, et cetera. What my concern is, is that when I read the ordinance, which is ordinance 1642, section key, which is on page four, which talks about telecommunications services, it talks about the transmission and conveyance of voice, data, audio, video between telephones, including broadband services, cable, Wi-Fi, Wi-Max, et cetera. So the way I would read this is that, yes, we're going to lower, hopefully lower the tax from 11% to 10%, but the tax would now include cable services and Internet services. So, you know, if you get FIOs for $135 a month, and I think we have the cheapest that we can get, there'd be a $13.50 a month utility tax tact on that. I figured out for myself personally, dropping my tax on the gas and the water, excuse me, the gas and the electric would save me about a dollar a month, but the FIOs would hit us for 13 and a half. And I've spoken to some other residents, and similarly, their total UUT per month would go up. So I think staff needs to clarify, is this going to cover cable and Internet services, earth link, what have you, if you have a separate Internet service? If so, then the language that you put on the ballot needs to be really clear. You can say modernization of technology, et cetera, but you need to be clear that it's now going to be expanded to include cable and Internet, so that individual voters, when they vote on this, they can do their own math, et cetera. My math overall in the city, I think overall, this is actually going to increase the total net. The staff report says they'll probably drop the total UUT by 300,000, but I'm not going to take you through the math, but I think actually the total will go up by several hundred thousand when you hit 4,000 homes getting cable and Internet. Thank you very much.
Are we going to answer Dr. Goldberg's questions now or?
Yeah.
Okay, stick around, Robert, because you'll get your answer.
There will be a presentation tonight on it, and I think we can say it will not cover Internet. All right. Anyone else?
Or cable TV.
Right. Okay, seeing no one, we close the oral communications. We move on to city attorney report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just to report that earlier tonight, the city council did meet in closed session to discuss the two items on the closed session agenda. No rebuttal action was taken.
City manager report? Yes, Mayor, thank you. Just have one item tonight. It was already alluded to, but I believe our police chief would like to announce again National Night Out to the council and the public. Chief?
Thank you, City Manager Ingram, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I'd like to bring up Sergeant Phil Gonshak, who has a very exciting announcement for National Night Out.
Thank you, Chief. Good evening, Mayor Heaton, council members, City Manager Ingram, city staff. Thank you for affording me this time tonight to speak before you. My name is Sergeant Phil Gonshak and I am the Public Information Officer for the Seal Beach Police Department. With that, we'd like to formally invite all Seal Beach residents, friends and family to the 2014 National Night Out, while on force and appreciation night. The national event known as National Night Out is designated evening when communities across America come together to take a stand against crime, drugs and disorder in their neighborhoods. On Tuesday, August 5th, 2014, the Seal Beach Police Department will be partnering with members of the community to affirm our conviction against crime, disorder and promote personal preparedness. The event takes place in the Target Shopping Center's Northern Parking Lot of 12300 Seal Beach Boulevard in Seal Beach, on August 5th from 6:00 PM until sunset. The Seal Beach Police Department, along with the Marine Safety, Seal Beach Community Services, Parks and Recs, Public Works and Seal Beach Naval Weapons Station, Targets and Ralphs will be coordinating a night of information, interaction with public safety, information and fun. Target and Ralphs will be hosting a hot dog and beverage stand. The Lions Club will also be providing fresh popcorn and the Seal Beach Police Association will be having a bounce house for all the children to enjoy. This year, Seal Beach is promoting the Leaving Lights On, I'm sorry, Leaving Porch Lights On campaign, so if members of the community could please remember to leave them on during the duration of the event, that would be appreciated. This will be a great event to get involved in your community and to meet your neighbors. With an expected 3,500 to 4,000 attendees, we're looking forward to promoting a large number of city services and products to help everyone enjoy and have fun. We hope to see you all there and thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, one quick thing to add. We are doing this in partnership with Los Alamos this year too, for the first time, which I'm pretty excited about. And I do have one bad announcement. My Elvis impersonator fell through, so if anyone knows anyone that's an Elvis impersonator who would do it for free, be happy to help.
All right, very good. See y'all then August 5th at the Target Center at what time?
Six to eight, six to dusk.
Okay, six to dusk. All right, council comments. Councilman Shanks, Councilman Levitt, Mayor Protem Sloan, Councilman Miller?
Yeah, I have several. First of all, last Friday, Caltrans advised the public that they were going to recommend alternative three, which is toll lanes on the I-405 freeway between roughly the 73 and the 605 freeway. Caltrans hasn't defined what the toll lane will be. They haven't defined if it will be delineated or whether it will be continuous access. They haven't said if a two-person carpool, excuse me, two-person vehicle will have to pay a toll or not pay a toll. They haven't figured out their financing yet. And today on the board, I tried to put it on the agenda, but, well, first of all, the staff of OCTA has decided that they're just going to proceed with alternative one, which means they're going to spend $1.3 billion of your money to develop one lane in each direction, and that's going to facilitate Caltrans being able to put toll lanes in for about $300 million. So our staff has taken the approach that they'll go ahead with alternative one, but it's really alternative three, and I've tried to make a point that alternative one is not alternative three. And I tried to put an agenda item on today, but I wasn't successful. Janet Winn is also, Supervisor Winn has also made a recommendation for a proposal to go to the Legislative and Communications Committee meeting, and Supervisor Bates, who's also on the board, has recommended that Caltrans define their project before they proceed. So it's kind of all up in the air, and I know, I think this week, the Corridor City Group, again, which that is Costa Mesa, Fountain Valley, Huntington Beach, Seal Beach, Westminster and Los Alamos, will be meeting to figure out what we should do next. And otherwise, last week, I requested an agenda item for a performance evaluation of the city manager. And that was in no way related to the city manager that there was a poor performance or anything like that. It's just that I knew, having seen her contract, that it was time for her performance evaluation. I didn't know the exact date, so I put her forward. Unfortunately, the mayor had her own performance, her own agenda item the same way, and the schedule became a little tighter than I could deal with, which is, I'd asked to have it extended a little longer, but we weren't able to do that. Also, tonight there is an agenda item A, and it's a very sensitive agenda item for me, and I suggested that the mayor should remove it, and she decided to leave it there, so I'll address it as sensitively as I can. But for me, the mayor's purpose is to work with the council and represent the council and not try to show them who's in control and who's in charge. So for that effect, I'm very disappointed in the mayor's actions. That's my last item on this.
Okay, so what I'd like to talk about tonight is that I went to the concert, the Wednesday night concerts last week, and found that they had added a new section, and I would recommend everybody check it out. We had Los Al High School students performing in a pre-concert. It was outstanding. We even had one young man who has been on The Voice, and his voice is unbelievable. So I really told the people that were putting on the concerts, I thought this was such a great thing, I hope they make it permanent and perhaps even devote a whole evening to it. So go on down to the concert and check out the pre-concert. It's really wonderful. So with that, I think we will go ahead and move on to the council items, which is, I guess we do item A next. Is that right, city attorney?
That is the next item on agenda.
Okay, so we're going to move on to the council policy 100-03, to adopt resolution number 6495, amending section 4 dot D, placement of items on council agendas. Do we do, do you want to do a report, Steve, on it, or do you want me just to talk on it?
I'd be happy for you just to explain the nature of the item.
Okay, thank you.
As mentioned in the staff report, this resolution and proposed amendment to the council policy has been brought forward at the request of the mayor. At the mayor's request, I did draft the following proposed revision to the rule. Basically, there's an additional sentence added in the middle of that section that says that neither the mayor nor any other council member may place on a council agenda the performance evaluation of any officer of the city as that term is defined in section 700 of the city charter unless requested at a council meeting and having the concurrence of at least two other council members. Just to also clarify, the reference, section 700 of the charter defines the officers of the city to include the members of the city council, the city clerk, the city treasurer, city manager and city attorney.
All right, thank you. Is there any discussion on this item that anyone would like to discuss? Do we have a motion?
I have a number of items I'd like to discuss on this.
Oh, I thought you'd already done it. I'm sorry.
No, far from being done. First of all, the calls for a performance evaluation of the city council, the city council is not, there's no performance evaluation on the city council. Their constituents vote them in and they either don't reelect them or they recall them. There's no such thing as a performance evaluation on a city council or any elected official. We have no performance evaluation on the city clerk. This would include the city clerk by the staff report and by the city charter. So we don't do a performance evaluation on our city clerk, so that one isn't applicable here. We also have the city treasurer, which is defined as the director of finance. That person responds, reports to the city manager, so again, that doesn't blow in here. So that's another error in this document. It can apply to the city manager and city attorney, and I guess maybe the city clerk if we modify the program later. My issue with this is, I'm very sensitive to this because it really came about over a number of issues, and unfortunately, the senior attorney's not here today, and I think he would know more about why this shouldn't be on here than why it is on here. I'd like to mention, back on December 8th, 2008, I had a performance evaluation of the former city manager. Then Mayor Charles Antos allowed me to have that performance evaluation. And the reason for that performance evaluation was, as a city councilman, I could not get information from the city manager at all. I tried to find out the fire station we now have. I said, can we rebuild it? He said, no, it's beyond repair. And I said, well, do you have documentation of that effect? He said, no, I don't have documentation of that effect. I said, he said, two engineers said that it had to come down. I said, who were they? He refused to tell me. He was belligerent, he was rude, he was angry, he was dismissive. So I had an agenda item on him, and that was it. And the next month, which was January 2009, he proceeded to file a complaint that I had done, directed his staff to do work. He sent it to all these people, except for Mayor Heaton, but he sent it to all these people, and it's just as Dr. Goldberg said, you have no choice. You cannot, the Brown Act doesn't allow me to talk to each one of these people. So my only choice is to say, I want to have an agenda, a closed session, agenda item. And if I have to, well, I'll come back to that. But anyway, I asked Mayor Shanks, can I have a closed session item? He said, no. I asked him twice, no. I never got a closed session item. Eventually, the city attorney said there was no merit to his accusation. So that's tough. And then we got to the summer of 2009, and composting. The city manager, actually, city manager, by the way, I have to tell you that as it, oh, I'll get to this, and I'm sorry, I'm a little emotional because I'm very, this is like digging up a real sore thing for me. We had a composting issue up there, and the city manager says, oh, I'll build it with a big smile, and all he had to do was wait five days for the council meeting. He says, no, we're not going to wait, we're going to start right now. But eventually, you know, the composting project went away, and I actually have some good news on that later. But what happened in the next month, he filed a written document on me that was a letter here that has 10 or 11 accusations, which I had to answer. Then he filed, within a few days, he filed one that says harassment. Okay, I said harassment. Our attorney, our senior counsel is not longer here, said to me, well, it must be sexual harassment. I said, what? I said, that's impossible. So how would you like to go home to your spouse and say, oh, I've been accused of sexual harassment? Well, that's what I had to do. But really, ultimately, I found out it was, he said I was harassing him. So I had a total of 11 written accusations, and then they wouldn't explain them to me. The only way I could have them explain to me is if I went to an interview and was interviewed. I went to that interview and I had 24 accusations thrown at me. Okay, this is great. And that became a, another council item that came up December 12th. And that one, which is the reason I brought this up, the council was there, I recommended the termination of the city manager, my attorney recommended the termination of the city manager, and just, I'm going to highlight them because I'm not going to go through it all, but, or in writing, the city manager had been angry, rude, belligerent and dismissive of me. Okay, then the city manager had repeatedly refused to answer my legitimate city-related questions. So my constituents were getting no representation from this man. Okay, so then, we come to the city manager has failed to respond, assist and may respond and to respond appropriately to residents' inquiries. Then I had the city manager often was untruthful. Nice way of saying it. Then I had the city manager filing a complaint against me associated with conduct, evidence, his power of judgment, insubordination, negligence and his unacceptable and inappropriate behavior. The conclusion of that was, there was no merit to any of it. Absolutely 20, almost 30 items, and there was no merit to any of it. Okay, he wasn't terminated. The same council that wouldn't terminate him would be the council I'd have to go to and say, can I have a performance evaluation? But they won't terminate him, they're sure as hell not going to have a performance evaluation. So that, having free people input, it's just, there's no Brown Act. I mean, how do I defend myself? How do I go to anybody and say anything if I don't have a closed session? So I'm thinking that's bad. And I only asked for one closed session personally. I had asked again in May of 2010 for a performance evaluation, and it was basically denied originally. Then I pointed out the city manager's contract said you should have an evaluation by June, but he didn't have to have it, but we went ahead and had it. And there were a number of closed session items on his performance that I didn't call for. The city attorney called for him, not me. And the bottom line is, as a councilman, you have no recourse. If somebody makes false accusations against you, you have no recourse. And this document, as prepared, and if it's not by accident, the council policy has that that one person can ask for a review. If they won't fire him, they're sure as hell aren't going to let me have a review. So it's like, what do you do if you're that guy that's accused of doing something? What do you do? You can't talk to him because of the Brown Act. I know what I did do today. I'd say, to hell with the Brown Act. I'd just go ahead and say it. Because if you're going to put this kind of presentation through, I'm going to say, to hell with you, I'm going to do it my way. I mean, it's, that's the end of it. I think this, and I told the mayor this, that this item should be just taken off the agenda. I told her it was too sensitive. I said, I don't want to go into it. I prefer you to remove it. There's no need for it. I never, Jill, by the way, Jill Ingram, I missed that part back when I had the investigation. She is the most honest, truthful, candid, I mean, she's fantastic. So I wasn't challenging her performance last week when I said, or last council meeting, when I said I wanted a performance evaluation. I knew it was due. Anyway, I move this item as received and filed. Thank you.
I'd like to put up a substitute motion that we pass this, but I would like to discuss it because I, Gary, I think you had a hard time. I absolutely am sorry that you had that hard a time. However, that city manager is no longer here, and regardless of the fact of all the times you pulled him up for review, that he never was fired. So there was not, now it's my turn to talk, and during all of that time, he never was fired, there were never three people on the council who agreed with you as to what happened. All it did was stop the city's business. I think that this business meeting is city business. And when I came to the conclusion that this was needed was when you sent me a letter telling me that you were going to call Jill Ingram up yet again, and told me that you had had at least three performance reviews of David Carney. That is not the point of what the business is that goes on at this dais. We are elected by our constituents to do city business here, and there are many ways for council members to address the city manager. Calling for their performance review from this particular venue, I believe, is wrong. So that's why I think we should separate things from people. I absolutely believe that every council member should be able to put an item on an agenda. People are not items. And if there's a real problem with the city manager, you're going to have three people that will be able to decide that. A council review of a city manager is what is called for in their contract. It needs to be done by the council, and one person is not a council.
Okay, first of all, once you have a performance evaluation, it doesn't mean you're safe for a whole year, but to correct it, I asked Mayor Antos for a performance evaluation on December 8th, 2008, and got that review. The performance evaluation that took place on 12, 12, 8, 2010, was not my doing, it was Mr. Carney that created the issue. I just, it had to come back to the council, so I didn't ask for that one, but it happened. And then I asked for the one in June, June, in 2010. So the bottom line is, I think it's a poor thing, and if you think his performance was not questionable, then I can't help you.
I never said that his performance may not have been questionable. What I said is that you could not get three members of the council to agree with you on that, and that's what you need.
Have you ever heard of the city of Bill? They all agree with each other too. Don't tell me about city councils that perfect. I'm sorry.
Okay, with that, I have a substitute motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
What is a substitute motion?
To revise our council policy, our rules of procedures that we adopt for ourselves so that it takes three council members to call for a review of a person, of an officer of the city.
Your original.
That's it, yeah.
Madam Mayor, it's simply to approve the resolution as presented?
Okay. To approve the resolution as presented.
Ms. Goshen?
Yes, that's where we are.
Okay, I agree a lot with Robert Goldberg. I believe you're the one who mentioned that this would be a violation of the Brown Act to get the three concurrent opinions to do that. I don't practically see how we can do this.
Well, what you would do, I'd say, I'd like to call for an evaluation of the city manager. And then you would say, I second, and then we vote, and then we put the evaluation on like we do everything else. You don't talk outside, ever. You do the people's business at the city dais, but it keeps from, one person from abusing a council policy in order to bring somebody up over and over and over again. So if you want an evaluation of the city manager, you might would say, I call for an agenda item to put the city manager up for approval. And then you'd get a second, and then you'd vote. So it's a council decision to put it on the agenda. I don't think it's right to have one person be able to just pull up people over and over again like that.
Right.
I, you know, I don't necessarily want to do this, but I did receive an email from this Mr. Miller saying that he had called for at least three performances of David Carney, and two reviews would unjustly reflect on Jill, but they will need to happen. I, that's wrong. And that's when I started thinking, we have to do something about this policy. So that's, that's how you would do it outside of the Brown Act. You would do it like every other piece of business we do here. You would make a council decision to review an employee or a, an officer of the city.
One more, one more question on this. Typically, we do not air our dirt of laundry in public.
Exactly.
So if we're going to want to have an evaluation of whether the city manager or, or any of her-
It would go to-
Senior staff, we would discuss this first before we would come up here and bring it up and say, "I want to have an evaluation."
But we can't because of the Brown Act.
Exactly.
So if you-
That's why I think this is an obstacle. The Brown Act, to me, is an obstacle to the passage of this.
The Brown Act is an obstacle to a lot of things.
God knows, yeah.
But the, the way I, I think would be the correct way to do it is if, let's say, Mike, you get really upset with an officer of the city, and you say, "Okay, Doug Bonnet, I'm, I want an evaluation." So you would say, "I would like to go back into it." Now, we're going to do it annually anyway, because that's in the contract. So this, what we're talking about now is in between the annual. Then what you would do is say, "I would like to have, you know, bring this up, put it on the closed session agenda, because we're not, we're not going to use this venue to talk about personnel items. So we'll put it on the closed session." And then, if nobody else has a problem with the, the officer that you want evaluated, nothing's going to happen in closed session either, just like nothing ever happened with David Carney in closed session. You, if you don't have three votes, you don't have three votes. And then you begin to call for something over and over again, and it's just an intimidation of the person.
Oh, boy.
No?
No, I'm just saying, you think what I, that wasn't-
No, I'm not saying that, Gary. I think you had a very rough road. I'm not saying that.
Yeah, not with, not with Jill.
All right, but I think this is not the way to do it. I think that-
I, I want to make one more point.
You can always get an attorney, like you did.
I didn't follow this through against the city, which I could have done, because I would have been seeing the people.
All right.
Trust me. Listen, the other, I, I went through those examples quickly, but I could have gone back and gone through them one at a time. I represent a district, and if you, as a city manager, refuse to do things for me and my district, and I can't bring it before the council, the, the performance issues that you're not doing, they're, they're unrepresented.
Well, you have other measures, you can go to one council member.
That's one.
Well, now you got a second, okay? And then, once you get a second, you can discuss it, and then put it on the agenda.
I would say, no one's going to come and ask for a performance evaluation for somebody without reason. And if you, if you have to explain your reason, you violated the Brown Act, or you violated their rights.
No, that's not true.
If I come and say, "This person has falsely accused me of directing staff," and then I told you what I want to talk to you about in closed session. If I just come to you and say, "I want to talk to you guys," and you'll say, "No, we, we had one of those two months ago," that's all. I, I think, that's, I can't say anyone.
I think we need a council policy revision, with the understanding that council policies are always reversible. They're only council policies, they're not law. And so I think that the whole point of the council policy is to hold a, a meeting where we do the people's business with decorum. And the, having one council member be able to call up someone for an evaluation over and over again is not conducive to getting the people's work done, it's not conducive to running a decorum meeting. And there are other ways to go about getting evaluations done.
Call the question, and was it seconded?
Yes. You, you seconded it, didn't you, Mike?
No, I did not.
I thought you did for a discussion.
I will if it wasn't seconded by anybody else.
Okay.
This is the motion, the substitute motion, to substitute the original motion that did not have a second, to approve the resolution as presented.
That's three to two, it passes. So now, the appropriate way to have and, to discuss people is to get three people on the council who agree this person needs to be evaluated. An evaluation will happen every year anyway, okay? But should there be an egregious, and, and I do want to go on record saying that Mr. Miller had a very hard time. There's no question that he had a very difficult time. And, but I would say that all the times that Mr. Carney was called up for evaluation didn't solve him either. So we will move on.
There weren't that many.
Um, move on to item B, the 2014 League of California Cities Annual Conference. Dedicate, designate a city council member as the voting delegate and up to two alternates to represent the city of Seal Beach at the September three through fifth, 2014 Annual Conference held in the city of Los Angeles. I intend to attend, and so I would like to be the voting delegate, and I understand we have two others, is that correct?
Correct.
Gary, are you attending also?
I may not be there to vote, so I wouldn't be a good candidate for voting.
Okay. Mike, you will be there?
I will be there, and, and yes.
Okay, because you would be my alternate?
Need a motion to appoint Eli as a designated?
Um, I think we need to decide whoever, everybody-
The action taken would be by minute action, a motion is not going to be appropriate.
Okay, because at this point, I'm planning on going, but I might need an alternate, depending on-
That would be-
Circumstances. Okay, thank you. All right, with that, then, I will be the voting delegate with Mike the alternate, who will fill in for me if I'm unable to go. Okay?
Is that a motion?
Oh.
I'll move that one.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, please vote. Okay, that's five zero. All right, at this time, nothing was pulled from the consent calendar, so I ask for a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Move approval of the consent calendar. Second.
Please vote. Five zero in approval of the consent calendar. Okay, with that, we do not have a public hearing tonight, and we have no unfinished business. And now we go to new business, and this is going to be considering the item K, the City of Seal Beach General Municipal Election for November fourth, 2014. Do we have a staff report, please?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. I'm going to ask our finance director, Vicky Beetley, to summarize the staff report for you tonight. As the council will recall, back in February, at the February tenth council meeting, the council unanimously directed staff to come back to you with a ballot measure in November, to amend the city charter to make the city clerk an appointed position. So we have that ballot measure language before you tonight. We're also recommending a utility users' tax ballot measure, and I'm going to ask Vicky to go through that with you, and then between Vicky, myself, and the city attorney, we'd be happy to address any questions that the council might have. So with that, I'll turn it over to Vicky.
Thank you, City Manager Ingram, mayor, members of the city council. You do have before you tonight two proposed ballot measures for the upcoming November election. The first one is to make the city clerk an appointed position rather than elected position. I will defer any questions regarding that topic to the city attorney and the city manager. But on the second page of the staff report, the question being called for is amending the city charter, and just simply asking, by government code, shall the office of the city clerk be appointed? And the ballot measure will ask for yes or no. More importantly, what I'd like to go into is some of the details for the utility users' tax. We have the same kind of a thing here. We're asking for the support for a ballot measure. The city utility users' tax ordinance has been in existence for quite some time. The primary purpose of this is there's need for modernization of the language in the ordinance. Because this is a locally controlled funding source, it is critical that we keep this local funding source, and passing this measure would allow us to do so. It also allows for fair and equal treatment of all of the telecommunications services that are provided in the city of Seal Beach, by providers in the city of Seal Beach. One of the issues that was brought up tonight by Mr. Goldberg was the definition of telecommunications on page four of the municipal code that's updated. And to be very clear, telecommunications speak specifically to telephone usage. Whatever mechanism that telephone is delivered over is what's being referenced here. So EarthLink, internet is not taxable, any of those kinds of things are not taxable, nor does the city of Seal Beach's ordinance, as it was previously written and it continues to be written, does that include any cable television-type services that might be provided. The measure that's before is asking for the reduction in the utility users' tax. The rate is currently ten percent. The proposal is to reduce that utility users' tax to, excuse me, the rate is currently eleven. The proposal is to reduce it to ten percent. That is a, just from a numerical perspective, it's a one percent reduction in the utility users' tax. However, from an economic perspective, that one percent reduction is actually a nine percent reduction overall, which means the city's revenue will be impacted by about four hundred and fifty thousand to four hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Modernization of this ordinance will allow for the city to capture those providers that should have been paying but have not been paying. The only new source of revenue that potentially will come to the city is this new measure, as it's written, will include T-one lines, which are primarily business lines and not in significant use, as, as far as I know, in the city, and then paging. And paging is one of those systems that is currently out there that's kind of going by the wayside because of all the other types of communications methods that are available. But there are still some industries that use paging, and so we would capture some revenue that was on there with relation to paging. One of the other things that I'd like to point out is, in the ordinance itself, we have a mechanism for exemptions for seniors. That mechanism is going to stay in place. It has always been in place, and it has income metrics, and it does have household number and household metrics. One of the issues that staff has had for a number of years is that the old municipal code was referring to an index that hadn't been in place for, since about 2009. The, the index was actually eliminated by the state of California. But the city staff, not having any other place to go, has been using this metric. So the income level that has been in place hasn't been adjusted since 2009, because we had nowhere else to go. On page six, excuse me, on page five of the new municipal code proposed, we put a new metric in place that does raise the household income level from forty-four thousand ninety-six dollars to a little bit higher level of forty-five thousand six hundred and fifty dollars. But more importantly, what it does is provide the city a mechanism for adjusting this income level up each year, because we're now going to be using the federal level for Section Eight and HUD-type allowances that are out there. This metric is very unlikely to go away, so we like the fact that we have been able to use this as a replacement metric. And then, of course, the ballot measure itself is just asking for whether or not we should modernize the, the tax, excuse me, modernize the ordinance and reduce the tax. And modernization is key for us, because as I indicated, there are a number of telecommunications providers that are not currently being captured, or potentially, excuse me, potentially not currently being captured. But more importantly, this is going to allow us to move forward for just maintaining a fair and equal treatment of all of the telecommunications provider in the city. And then, as we have discussed, the reduction also extends to both gas and electric. In the staff report, the fiscal impact is approximately three hundred thousand dollars, and the reason why it's not the four fifty to four eighty that I started with is because the telecommunications component, modernization will allow us to capture revenue and offset the potential loss in telecommunications only, but not in gas and electric. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions?
Just to clarify, the internet will not be taxed, is that correct?
That is absolutely correct.
Um, I have a question. Vicky, I was wondering, can you tell me how we can explain to people how they can figure out what this is going to look like on their bill?
In, in about ninety-eight percent of the cases of the residents in the city of Seal Beach, well, a hundred percent, most likely in the case of the residents, their bill will be reduced. Their bill will be reduced. If you have an eighty-dollar bill and you are paying eleven percent of your eighty dollars, your utility users' tax will drop to ten percent of the eighty dollars. The impacted parties, as I mentioned before, will more likely be businesses that do have a T-one line and some paging business. But other than that, each resident in the city should see a decline in the utility users' tax that is on their bill. So if they wanted to figure it out, they would get their bill, and they would get their gas bill, their, I mean, what do they, what do they get to figure this out? They should have a look at their gas bill. Each gas bill will have a line on it that says utility users' tax, and that utility users' tax mathematically should equal eleven percent of whatever the bill charges are made up of. Similarly, with the electric bill, the same kind of mathematical equation should take place. The tricky part is with the bundled bills that provide, for example, in the city, Time Warner, and some people have phone, some people have phone and cable, some people have phone and cable and internet. The way the providers should be presenting the bill information now is that they should be able to differentiate between what service is being provided and the phone, the telecommunications component of their bill is what is being charged, what is currently being charged or being collect, excuse me, thank you, let me stop. The telecommunications piece is the piece on which the utility users' tax is currently charged.
Okay, so what they're, what it's on is gas, electricity, and telephone services.
Telecommunications services, yes.
Okay. So no internet, no cable TV.
Correct.
And so by reducing it from eleven to ten percent, then the residents should be able to pretty much count on a one percent decrease in what they're paying.
That's correct.
But they can look at their own bills to figure out what that would be.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
That's not entirely, but what you, what you just said now is, there'd be a one percent decrease in their bill, but there would not be. There'd be-
No, no, on the, on the utility-
There'd be close to a ten percent decrease in their tax, not a one percent. Gets confusing.
It is confusing.
It is.
It's a one percent decrease in the tax, which mathematically is about a, a nine percent overall decrease.
Right, okay, thank you. Right, Mud, right.
I'm going to leave it to the mathematics. Mayor, if I could make a comment just on the city clerk measure. As all of you know, our city clerk has done a really fine job of doing what she does, and, you know, over the years has acquired the professional expertise and knowledge and training, and is a former city clerk myself. I know what that entails. And as time goes on, those responsibilities become that much more complex in terms of dealing with the government code, elections code, Public Records Act, the Brown Act. And so I just want to make it clear, this isn't anything punitive against our city clerk. I think what we're doing is guaranteeing for the future, when Ms. Devine retires and moves on, that we've got a security measure in place that we, that we can continue on with that responsibility. And so I think it's clear to note for the public's benefit that this measure will have no impact whatsoever on Linda Devine or her, she has two years remaining on her term. It wouldn't become effective until 2016, when her term would be up for reelection at that point.
All right, I'd also like to piggyback on that and say that Linda did a lot of really cool things when she came into office, and a lot of which people are enjoying today, like this video streaming. Well, it wasn't your fault, it didn't work earlier, but the video streaming, we had none of that. All of the video that gets uploaded, so we can go back and watch the meetings, Linda did all that. And Linda, you put all the documents on the internet, so everyone can search for the documents. So I think you've done an outstanding job, and I want to really underscore the same thing that Jill said. This is, this is nothing that relates to how Linda has- This is, this is nothing that relates to how Linda has run the job, because you've done an outstanding job. Thank you. Okay. So with that, any more questions?
I'd just like to piggyback on that. Linda, I think, lives in her office, because she's always available. And I think that's one of the things I really appreciate about her, and she's always available. And if she doesn't have the answer, you get it right away. Linda, you're going to be a tough act to follow.
Anybody else? Okay. So do we have any motions on this, item K?
Are you voting on them together or separately?
Well, I think Steve told me that we're doing it all together, right, Steve?
Yeah, just to explain what we're looking at here, there are three documents in front of you. The ordinance 1642 calling for the election for ballot measures to be held on, let me go ahead and just read the title.
So I should take a vote on the ordinance?
Yeah. And there's also two resolutions that we haven't discussed, so I want to point out for the public what, what those are. One is a request to the county to consolidate the election on these ballot measures with the general election in November. Very rote, very standard request. The second is a resolution authorizing members of the council to file ballot arguments for or against either measure, and setting priority for selection of ballot arguments to be distributed to voters in the event that there's more than one argument selected. So those are the three documents before you. You could approve them all by, by single motion, but perhaps best just to go ahead and take the ordinance first.
Okay. So let's take a motion for ordinance number 1642.
Now, which one is this?
This is calling and giving notice of the holding of a general municipal election for ballot measures to be held on Tuesday, November 4.
And I can read the title and for the record.
Go ahead.
Ordinance, this will be ordinance number 1642, an ordinance of the city of Seal Beach ordering the submission to the qualified electors of the city, and the general municipal election to be held on Tuesday, November 4, 2014. As called by, as called by ordinance number 1641, measures to amend the municipal code to reduce and modernize the city's utility users taxes, and to amend the Seal Beach city charter to make the seal, the city clerk an appointed position.
Can you take a motion, please?
Move. Second.
Please vote. That's five zero. Okay, now, resolution number 6493, requesting that the Board of Supervisors of the County of Orange consolidate the city's municipal election for ballot measures with the statewide general election.
Move. Second.
Please vote. Five zero. And number three, resolution number 6494, authorizing priorities for filing written arguments and rebuttals, and city attorney to write impartial analysis for the ballot measures.
Move that one. Second.
Please vote. That's five zero. All right. That takes care of tonight's business, and so we will adjourn to Monday, August 11 at 5:30 PM to meet in closed session if necessary. Thank you very much for coming.